Good morning. I call to order the December 12th, 2023, meeting of the Seline County Board of Commissioners. I would ask that the Clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Wies?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
I'd ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government. Please limit it to three minutes and they must pretend to items that are not on today's agenda.
Norman Mantle-Salina, are we voting today on awarding that $400,000 to the Salina Airport Authority? Because all I see here in Part G is presentations. Are we going to be allowed to comment on that? Because there's nothing on the schedule shows where you're going to do it on action items.
Typically, we allow comments on action items, things that we vote on.
It's not on there.
Anyone else who should just comment?
Good morning. I'm Mike Doral. You probably won't recognize my name, but these are my two books.
I recognize those.
I found my niche writing about Salina people. I'm here today. I'm a member of the board or the Salina Arts and Humanities Commission. And we talk about the placement of outdoor sculpture around town from time to time. And so at the last meeting, I suggested a piece of sculpture at the new jail. So if there's any part of the population who needs solace or hope or inspiration around this town, it's families going in to see members who are inmates there. But this is a county facility and not a city facility. So I've talked with the sheriff about it. He likes the idea. Of course, he wants to know what it's going to look like. But I don't know if he alone can make the decision or if you need to vote on that. And so what I would suggest is the students at the Central High Welding Shop make the sculpture. If you've seen that seven-foot-tall Mustang in the lobby made of stainless steel, it's a stunning piece of design and craftsmanship. The students are making a nine-foot cougar for South High. They're making two dogs for the Police Department and an owl for the USD 305. So their work is, again, stupendous. It's not amateur. The materials would cost no more than $5,000. And a contribution could be made to USD 305 for the materials. So I just don't know what the process would be here. And so I leave it up to you whether the sheriff can make the decision over the design and placement or if you need to be involved. I'm, I'm gonna, that's out of my hands.
Well, I appreciate that. And I don't believe that would be something that the sheriff would be able to solely by himself say this, we're going to put this sculpture up at the jail.
That's what I thought.
I think that would need to come back administratively to the commission itself. It's the first we've heard of it, obviously.
Sure.
It's certainly a worthy project in my, in my opinion. But I think we need to start more with our administration level of things and then have them bring that forward to the commission itself along with the sheriff. And from there, we can probably make a decision. I would defer right now to the administrator if that sounds reasonable or, or not.
Mr. Doral had emailed the sheriff and the sheriff and I had talked about it. We're sort of waiting till we get to the end of the project and see where we are budgetarily before we decide what might be appropriate. But it is on the radar.
Would you like me to write up a one-pager with what would I discuss here this morning for your, so you'll have some kind of documentation? I'd be happy to do that.
That'd be fine. I mean, before it comes to this level. Let me ask off the chart question. Would that be something that our ARPA funds could be used for? Rather than get into our budget?
They could. The intent would be to pay for it out of the project if there's funding available.
And the funding being donations? Is that what yours?
No, the funding being the bond issue.
Oh, I see. Okay. I understand. So I hope that gives you a little bit of direction to
Indeed, thank you very much.
to move forward. So thanks for, thanks for your writing about Salina.
Oh, you're welcome. Yes. I'll bring you a one-pager.
Anyone else? If not, we'll move to the consent agenda approval for today. It's approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of the public forum agenda, approval of the payroll, approval of county commission minutes for November 21st of 2023, and approval of a serial malt beverage license number 150253 for Sing Travel Plaza LLC. Are there any of those items that a commissioner wishes to pull and discuss further? And if not, I would take a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and approved. We approve the consent agenda for today. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. We'll move right into our action items. Item number one.
Neighborhood Revitalization Plan Renewal with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning. I believe we have a representative with the City of Salina here this morning to discuss this, so I'd invite him to come forward. The NRP is a plan that has been in place primarily centered around North Salina for a number of years. And this would just be an extension and adding one property to it.
Thank you for that introduction. Good morning, everyone. My name is Spencer Aiken and I'm here on behalf of City of Salina Planning and Zoning. I'm here to present the first action item of today, which is a resolution to renew Saline County's interlocal agreement for the City of Salina's Neighborhood Revitalization Program from 2024 through 2029 and including an amendment to the Neighborhood Revitalization Area Map to include the AgriCenter property, which is located at 1097 West Old Highway 40. So a little background on the Neighborhood Revitalization Program. Under KSA 1217, Section 114, Kansas communities can designate Neighborhood Revitalization Areas to encourage job creation and the development of properties subject to physical deterioration or other economic challenges where development would be unlikely to happen. So this is a program where property owners who are located within these boundaries, who make certain improvements to their property, can apply for a tax or property tax rebate for the increase in taxes attributable to that improvement. So the review criteria, which determines whether properties are eligible, can be found in Section 2A, which is page 36 of the packet for eligible individual historic insignificant structures. Section 2D, which is 40, page 41 of the packet, for eligible projects of exceptional community significance. Section 3, which is page 42, for property eligible for a tax rebate. And Section 4, which is page 43, for the criteria for determining eligibility. So the incentive method involves property tax rebates for the incremental increase in taxes paid due to the higher assessed property valuation as a result of the improvements made to the property. So the rebates only apply to the increase in value, so net taxes will never be lower than the existing taxes prior to redevelopment. So this basically means you pay your property taxes that are due and you obtain a receipt from the Saline County Treasurer. Then you submit a copy of your tax receipt and a copy of the tax statement from the city clerk's office, and they provide a rebate check back. The city began the Neighborhood Revitalization Program in 1996, and they currently have interlocal agreements with Saline County as well as the Central Kansas Extension District Number 3, the Salina Airport Authority, the Public Library, and USD 305. So the program is a five-year program. The current program expires on December 31st of this year. And then at the end of the five years, a full review is required. So on October 23rd of this year, the Salina City Commission approved a motion to direct staff to finalize the draft for the 2024-2029 Neighborhood Revitalization Plan to solicit the consent of applicable taxing jurisdictions and advertise for a public hearing. So that's what brings me, before you all today, to look to renew these cities' 2024-2029 Neighborhood Revitalization Program and extend Saline County's interlocal agreement. So that concludes that. I have an example if it would help. But for now, I think that gives us a general synopsis of what this is, and I can answer any questions you might have.
So if I can understand this, the city is the leading entity, leading this, this thing. The others, Airport, USD 305 County, et cetera, are merely saying that they agree with you that this should be done, basically?
Yeah, the, the city is, they steerhead this. They began the program in 1996. And yeah, you're correct. The city has interlocal agreements with taxing jurisdictions.
Other than that, then, the county really has no role in this process, other than to say, yeah, we agree?
Yeah, they review it. Essentially, they are required to review and renew their interlocal agreements. So, and we are adding a property as directed by the City Commission, the AgriCenter property at 1097 West Old Highway 40. But besides that, there aren't too many changes here, really. It's mainly just to update.
I think I understand and not understand all of this, but that's okay. In our seven, eight years that we've been up here, it's been our agreement that we will try to get along with the city. So I don't feel like this is an extension of that.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's a, it is a good program. I have some numbers here from finance. Saline County, it looks like. For 2022 tax year, $91,085. What is this? Yeah, the rebates Saline County had in 2022 is $91,000, so.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments from commissioners?
I just got one, real quick one. On the ag property on Highway Old 40, the reason you're putting it on the roll is so they can get their tax rebate?
Correct, yeah. It's to help encourage development.
Do we have any idea on that, as big as that property is with the ag deal, how much of a property tax that's going to incur?
I'll be honest, I don't particularly know many of the details of the AgriCenter criteria. I just know that the City Commission made a motion to add it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's, it's worked well over the years. I actually was on the City Commission when it originally passed. I think it's just another tool in the toolbox to, to help bring business to town and at very little cost, so.
Yeah, it is to encourage.
I've always been supportive of it, so.
And I concur with Commissioner Shadwick, but I have a question. Have we, the city contacted the county appraiser or they're still behind it and everything else, what we're looking at?
Um.
Of course, you would.
Yeah, Sean's aware of this.
Okay, all right.
City finances, too, if that.
Is this property in the city?
Yes, sir.
The 1097 West Old Highway 40, is that in the city?
It is, yes.
I am Dean Andrew, Planning and Zoning Administrator for the city. I've been administering this program for the last 23 years. But the, just the logistics of how it works, you had the question about AgriCenter. So in a property situation like AgriCenter, they submit a rebate application. I take that application and I take it to Sean Robertson, the county appraiser, and he assigns a base or beginning value that says, as is, the property is worth this much in terms of appraised value. The owner of that has to agree to accept that, that they're not going to protest that value or go through any kind of protest process. So that becomes the base value. They go out and make whatever improvements they're going to make to the property, and they have completed those and they're close to getting a certificate of occupancy for that. Once that occurs in the next calendar year, which would be 2024, we take it back to the county appraiser. They go out and look at it and say, based on the improvements they've made to the property, we think it's now worth X. And so the rebate is the difference between the before and the after value. And so in order to be eligible, you have to have an increase at least 20% in the appraised value. And then there's, there's just a formula of how that works.
Okay.
But we've had situations where somebody has put a bunch of investment in and it doesn't, still doesn't result in a 20% increase in appraised value. They don't get a rebate. It's, it's just to cushion you from an increase in property taxes based on improvements you've made, so.
Thank you, thank you.
One quick question. Dean, you might be able to help with this. If nothing happens to a property, inflation, it continues to have more value or tends to, even without improvements. If improvements are made, how do you separate what was just inflationary and what was caused by investment into the property?
The county appraiser doesn't break those out. It's just what, what the increase is as a result of the construction. So it, it is every year the county appraiser goes out and revalues property. And so when they revalue the property in 2024, they're going to be looking at whatever inflationary factors there are, plus the physical improvements they've made to the property, and then arrive at a post-construction value that would take both those things into account. And so the rebate is simply based on the before value versus the after value. And then that, it remains the same during the life of that 10-year rebate. And when the 10-year rebate's done, it's fully back on the tax rules.
Right. Anyone else? Is there any public comment? I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
I move we adopt Resolution 23-2391 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 23-2391. Further discussion? If not, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you for the presentation. We'll move to item number two.
Resolution to reappoint advisory council members with Rosie Walter, Senior Senate Director.
Good morning, Rosie.
Good morning, Commissioners. Senior Services, we are requesting approval to reappoint two of our council members to the advisory board to serve a second term. Those two members are Shanna Aneah, she's a reappointment, and Rita Deister. Their new terms will serve from January 1, 24 to January 2027. The alternatives are deny the request, recommend staff to seek candidates to complete an expression of interest, or approve resolution as submitted by staff. The staff recommendation is to approve the resolution as submitted by staff. The budget impact, if commission approved, there will be no budget impact. Services and staffing will be maintained at full expectation. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Questions or comments from commissioners? Any public comment? Bring it back to the commission for action.
I move we adopt Resolution 23-2396 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 23-2396. Further discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Rosie.
Thank you.
Item number three.
Purchase of sheriff transport van with Captain Stanfruits with the sheriff's office.
Good morning, Captain Fruits.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here requesting to purchase a new transport van that would contain a, a transport prisoner insert. This would be to replace a 2018 Ford transport van with a current mileage of 180,000-plus. Alternatives for action, the purchase of the van with the insert or basically do nothing. The staff recommends, we only had one bidder on this van and it was from Long MacArthur here in Salina. We are recommending that we purchase the new, the new transport van with the insert from Long MacArthur Ford. Budget impact, the price of the transport van with the insert installed was $71,296.78 with a trade-in, which they're giving us $7,000 for a trade-in. We have $69,486.35 remaining in the equipment budget for the sheriff's replacement vehicles for 2023. This will be transferred to the equipment reserve so we can make a payment in 2024. And the additional $1,809.65 will be covered by insurance proceeds from a wreck vehicle that would deposit it into the equipment reserve.
Captain, how many transport vans do we have now?
Seven.
And are all of them a, have this prisoner insert?
We only have one van that has the prisoner insert. It's a pretty big van. This would be a little smaller one that just contains two compartments. It'd basically carry 12 prisoners. The reason for the insert, I, you know, I would like to have all my vans with this insert because it gives you options on who you can transport. With an insert, I can transport male and female. But with just a regular van, you know, if I gotta go pick up a, a male and a female, I gotta send two vans. So that's kind of not very cost-effective.
Well, obviously, the prisoner insert means something to me. I, I would be remiss if I didn't mention it. My questioning, line of questioning is coming from the fact that we have, are moving all of our prisoners into one site. We don't need the, the need to travel all over the state transporting prisoners every day of the week. So that, that's where my questioning would come from. But with, with the prisoner insert van, I, I see that we, we need one of those, so.
Yes.
That's where my questioning comes from.
I'll, I'll take that a little further. So explain to me where you're transporting them to and from. I mean, here is obviously to the courtroom, but where else are you transporting?
With, like you know, we have a bunch of prisoners out on contract housing. We use them vans to go get them, run them back and forth to court because some of the places and some of the courts do, will not allow them to do it on video. So we have to go get the person and bring them back. Or they're going to be released or they're going to be center treatment. Besides just, you know, with the contract housing, you know, with the warrants being, you know, everywhere, we're picking up people in-state, we're picking up people out-of-state. Sometimes we're picking two or three of them out-of-state. So you need, you know, the option to put those people somewhere in the van, you know. There's sometimes you have a male and a female and sometimes they're all males. You just don't know.
Well, that having been said, I mean, that, that's what we're trying to alleviate. Part of the new jail was to have to not go out and get all these people. But if I follow in you correctly, the potential exists that someone is arrested in Denver, Colorado, and we have a warrant out for them, we have to go get them.
Yes.
So that's
Yes.
where that's coming from. It's not like we're going to go back and forth to Dodge City or Washington or whatever to get someone.
Right.
That's out, that, that part of it is going to be gone.
Yes.
But we're still going to have the need to transport someone from somewhere if we have issued a warrant for that person. They're captured somewhere else.
Correct. If the court deems that we need to extradite that person, it is our job when they get arrested somewhere else, whether it's California, Maine, wherever, we have to go pick them up.
Well, I'll, I'll reiterate the, the statement I made earlier, and that is, you know, with an $89, $89 million new jail, that was the big selling point, was to not have these people. with an $89, $89 million new jail, that was the big selling point was to not have these people deposited somewhere else in Belleville, Minneapolis, whatever it is.
Right.
And so that's where I'm coming from.
And I, and I agree with you that I understand that we still have to go pick up that prisoner in California. I just don't know if we need seven of them.
But, and that's why I ask about the prisoner insert. There, there's only going to be, what, one or two vans with that prisoner insert?
Well, we buy this one, it'd be two.
And so with two of the seven will have a prisoner insert, the others are just passenger vans.
Correct.
So in future, in the future, that we, when those come up for bid, we maybe can reject those?
Uh, our antenna is up, as they say.
One question I got, that 2018, is it in pretty rough shape?
Actually, it's, it's still on the road and it still drives fine. We just put on a lot of miles every day.
I mean, if everybody, I mean, if you look online, trucks and pickups and everything, I mean, even with 100,000-plus miles is bringing pretty doggone good money. And $7,000 for a 2018 van seems, you know, not very much of a trade-in at all. Is this something we can look at going through purple wave like they do some of the, we do some of the other stuff? And try to get more than, I mean?
We can, but then, you know, of course, you know, the purchase price from Long MacArthur is going to be $7,000 more.
I just think $7,000 is cheap for a 2018 van. If it's still in service and it's not what I call trashed out, I mean?
I don't think it is, but you know, that's what they give us.
As, as a new commissioner, Commissioner Hay, I'll always say that we have been down this path.
Okay.
We have tried the purple wave portion of it. It, it has been, it hasn't been to our advantage to do it.
Okay.
We've done it with the Roden Bridge, we've done it with some sheriff's vehicles. It's kind of a wash.
Okay.
And I'm sure that in the, in the process, the bid process that Long MacArthur took that into effect account when they were, they didn't know they were going to be the only bidder. So they're trying to give you their best deal, I think. So our hands are kind of tied.
The only thing I've had to say is congratulations, we finally getting something in that we're getting local.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Quick question, Captain. How much of a reduction of transports do you see once the jail is up and running with? How, how much of, of your transports are, are bringing our contract inmates back and forth?
Well, once we get moved over there, you know, the rest of us, you know, it's gonna, we're going to have to see where we stand for is, you know, the inmates, how the facility's running. If everything's going well, then we can start bringing all our contract, contract housing back. And then see how everything, you know, goes from there.
I don't, I don't think that's an option, to see how it goes.
No.
They're going to come back.
Right, they're going to come back, but, you know, we can't just pick up and move all our inmates over there then find out, you know, there's a problem with the door controls or whatever. And puts us in a bind where, you know, we're going to have issues. So it has to be working. We gotta know it's working.
I don't want to get us off track here because we're talking about a transport van versus moving prisoners into the jail. But I, I will ask, our original plan or schedule was to have prisoners basically over there by December the first. It's my understanding that due to some equipment shortages or, or backlog, that we haven't done that. What is the next estimated date on that?
Well, we're hoping for January.
Okay. Well, let's get back onto the van. So is there any other questions or comments? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
I'll make the motion in, in a bit, but I just want to make the comment that I'll be supportive of this as long as there's an understanding that we do not need seven transport vans. And I like your term that the radar is up. And taxpayers have been promised when they pass the $89 million bond issue that we would be able to save money on, on things like this. And, and to backtrack just because it's comfortable to have seven, I think is inappropriate. But that being said, I will, I will move that we approve RFA 2023-227 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-227. Is there any further discussion? If not, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries five zero. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Item number four.
Jail bonds recapture with Hannah Bet, deputy county administrator.
Hello, Hannah.
Good morning, commissioners. Back on November the 21st, your commission was updated on the county's capital improvement plan and all the different projects that we have underway. And as part of that discussion, staff presented the information about the ability to recapture $2,861,095 from the jail construction fund to reimburse the county for expenditures from the county's capital improvement plan for the jail project, for things that were purchased and paid for prior to the issuance of those bonds for the project. Those particular expenditures included things like architect fees, the purchase of the land, site evaluations, et cetera. So the option that you have in front of you today is to approve the transfer of $2,861,095 from the jail construction fund to be placed into the county's capital improvement fund or not approve that transfer. And so if the county, the commission would approve for this transfer to happen, the jail construction fund has a current balance of just a little over $3.9 million. That would leave 1.1,125,123 remaining for any outstanding invoices or other purchases that would be needed. And that is sufficient enough to complete the actual construction project. So with that request in front of you, I can certainly answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from commissioners?
I've just got one question. Is there $2,861,000 worth of expenditures?
Yes, sir.
There's that much?
Yes, sir.
That's all I need to know, thank you.
Hannah, the, the $1,125, after, after the, all the bills are paid, everything is done, what happens to that remaining monies?
So Phil can probably answer that question a little bit better.
So I will say, I don't think there's likely to be any left over. But if there is a few dollars left over, it would go back to pay the bonds.
Does that answer your question, Jim?
It, it does, it kind of scares me though you don't, you don't look for any to be left over. I guess we could always go back into our capital CIP monies and pull some of that back out if, if it should go over that.
It, so, not to get too off track here, but if you recall, the voters approved $89,655,000. We only issued the bonds for about 75 million. We ended up with 81 million because they were sold at a premium. So we anticipate fully spending that 81 million because the project is bigger than 81 million. Earlier this year, the commission approved, rather than issuing a second set of bonds, you approved taking money out of the jail sales tax for that $8 million delta. So we have been making some payments out of that jail sales tax fund. And that's why there's some money left in the bond at this point. But I do anticipate fully spending the bond.
All right, any, anyone else? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2023-224 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-224. Is there any further discussion? If not, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Hannah. Item number five.
End of year financial resolutions with Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning again, commissioners. So this is a series of three resolutions that we do annually. The first is to cancel outstanding warrants that are over two years old. The second is to waive the requirements of our financial statements on a GAAP basis and instead prepare those on a, what's called a K-MAG basis, which is the statewide accounting standards. And the third is to authorize transfers of funds at, out of this year's budget at the time of audit, when the audit is finalized and those transfers go into our capital funds. The, uh, these resolutions have all been reviewed by both county councillor and by our outside auditor, Randy Hoffmeyer. The only thing that is different this year than in past years is the division within Public Works. So typically, if we have any money left over in Roden Bridge, it is divided up between the county capital, the equipment, Roden Bridge equipment, and then the special highway fund. That's always been sort of a third, a third, a third for any money left over. This year, upon the recommendation of the county engineer, we're doing 40, 30, 30, with that 40 going to special highway. And that's just to deal with some anticipated expenses in special highway. The other funds have pretty robust balances. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but this is a pretty routine matter and I would recommend approval.
The only question I have, can we adopt all the resolutions with one vote?
I would ask that the motions specify all three of the resolution numbers, but I believe it can be done with one vote.
Okay.
Just to clarify a word that is being used there, these, these are known as the cancellation of warrants. And when I think of a warrant, I think of a jail arrest warrant. And I want you to, the public to know that your warrant, if you have a warrant out for yourself, you are not, it is not canceled. This does not do that.
These are warrant checks.
Yes, clarification.
Good point.
Any other comments, commissioners? Is there any public comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
I move we adopt resolutions 23-2393, 23-2394, and 23-2395 as presented.
Second to motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolutions 23-2393, 23-2394, and 23-2395. Is there any further discussion? If not, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign, motion carries five zero. Thank you. We will move to item number six.
Meeting dates for 2024 with Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
Good morning once again. So the county commission a few years ago adopted by charter resolution, a process that we set our meeting dates annually. And so typically, those are of course each Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. We had a little bit of discussion earlier this year about the potential of moving some of those meetings to a different time of day. Commission didn't seem to be interested in that. So this is continuing the same schedule for next year. Six of the meetings would be study sessions. There would be a few, four, I believe, four or five cancellations during the year. And then there would be 42 regular meetings right here, like we're doing right now. The only change from the prior schedule that the commission considered is in talking with staff, we felt it would be valuable to have one more meeting in December. So rather than canceling the New Year's Eve meeting, go ahead and have that meeting, cancel one in July instead. Be happy to answer any questions, but it's really the commission's discretion to set your schedule.
This, you know, what, several months ago that we talked about this, in light of the fact that the city has adopted cancellation of about half their meetings every other week, I think it is, they're going with an every-two-week schedule. That was in our conversation and I thought that was going to be part of the presentation, but obviously not. According to this schedule, there, really, there is no, no fewer meetings than we've had in previous years. This is very similar.
That's correct, yeah. The commission at that time asked staff to do a survey of other counties because counties typically meet more often than cities do. And so I looked at the 10 largest counties in the state and how often they meet. And basically, the only one that meets less frequently than the schedule is Reno County. They typically skip one meeting a month, basically. But all the other large counties our size or bigger meet about this frequently.
You know, a, a thought that has kind of occurred to me is that perhaps next year would be a good year to test and keep track of some of those meetings. Because we enter segments of the year that we, we've got a 15-minute meeting. And maybe we could look and see what, what type of year that those fall under and maybe in the, in the future, maybe eliminate two or three meetings along the way that, that caused, caused those 15-minute meetings or 10-minute meetings. Might be something that we would want to do a test run on for that.
And I agree. And, and I guess my question would be, when we publish this schedule, that's, does that mean that we can't cancel a meeting ever? Can we still like, if, if it's a light day or?
The resolution specifically says subject to cancellation by the chairman.
Okay, fair enough.
Any other questions or comments? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt resolution 23-2392 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 23-2392 as presented. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign, motion carries five zero. Thank you. That concludes our action items for this week. We will move into informational items. Item number one.
Commissioners comment?
Commissioners that have a comment or?
I have a couple. I know we didn't want to derail the, the van conversation and vote, but it does worry me about the comments that he said about, let's see if, if it works out or not. And I'm, who's in charge of deciding that when they come back? Because I mean, the public has been promised that we're not spending money doing that. And, and maybe he just missmoke or maybe whatever, but that comment bothered me. So what, what is your thoughts on that? I mean, do they, I mean, do we need to direct them that they're coming back?
There's a lot packed into that question.
I know, I know.
So the commissioners don't get to direct sheriffs legally under Kansas law.
I'll stop you in just a second and I get that, but we okay their budget.
We do approve their budget and their budget for 2024 does not include any funding for contract housing.
Okay.
So I, I will follow up with the sheriff, but, you know, the sheriff is, is interested in making sure that the facility is in proper working order before they start moving people into it.
Fair enough.
But I have not had any indication from him of anything other than everybody coming back. And so I, I will follow up with him and, and make sure that everybody over there is on the same page.
My second one would be the, the public forum comment about the artwork at the jail, which I obviously I would be very supportive of. But the sheriff and his staff are very good at law enforcement and running a jail. And I think that we're pretty good at allocating money, but I don't, I wouldn't call any of us art critics. And although, however nervous I am about adding a layer to it, especially with the arts and humanities, I'd like somebody to look at that before it just gets okayed by just somebody that said it was okay. Whether it doesn't cost anything at all, let's just say $5,000 gets donated, it's still. it's still public property. And I want, I want somebody besides the five of us and the sheriff to at least look at what's, what's being placed. Those are my only comments.
I'd like, I'd like to comment on your comment on the, on the van, and that, that's why I asked the question, if, if this insert van was unique to their fleet as opposed to one of the seven, I assure you, they would not have gotten my vote for a new van if that were not the case.
Agreed.
So I, I think the entire commission is, is aware of that, and, and I feel very confident that Sheriff Solden is also very aware of those types of things that we're going to be looking at. Uh, he, he's gonna, I'm, I'm confident that he is looking at that.
And I hope he wouldn't take that anything I said is critical.
No, and I didn't, so. Any other commissioner comments?
I would like to just comment on last week's attending the KAC conference down in Wichita. It was just, I feel, one of the best conferences I've ever been to about learning something about what's going on in the marketplace today. It was, it was just worth every, every minute being there. It was great.
I'll agree with that.
And second, uh, speaking yesterday at the, uh, conference on community center on the drug court roundtable and the community corrections winter training, it was just, blew me away of how many people were attending that conference and the training out here at Webster Conference Center. And it's going on again today, but it's, it's amazing, uh, the people that's getting into this, uh, drug court, everything else that's happening in the world today. So I just want to comment on that there. It's, that the community corrections have done a great job on putting that together. This is the second year that they've done this, so it's just taken off. Thank you.
Right. Item number two.
Announcements?
I did have one announcement, um, commissioners. As the commission's aware, we are looking for a planning commissioner. We have one vacancy because of a passing of one of the planning commissioners, and so there are applications open, and so far, we've only gotten one applicant. We do plan to bring that to the commission in January if, if we don't get any more, so I would encourage folks listening to apply if they're interested in serving as a county planning commissioner, and certainly encourage the five of you to contact folks if you have some folks in mind.
Just a thought, does that commission have to be that large?
In the resolution for that, it does allow for some flexibility between anywhere from seven to nine members.
But not less than seven?
Correct.
And it also applies to so many people from, from the city of Salina, so many, so many from area.
Correct. The majority of the board has to live outside the city limits of Salina.
And the resolution was passed by the county commission? That's not a state resolution?
Correct.
So it can be changed by this county commission?
It could be. We'd probably have to consult with county council just to make sure that that would be possible.
Okay.
Now, that's a very good comment, Monty. I, that may be something we should look at, particularly in light of the issues we've had recently with that. Might be something we want to look at. Okay. That concludes the informational items. We will now move into presentations.
Presentation from the Salina Airport Authority on return overnight flight service with Tim Rogers, Executive Director of the Salina Airport Authority.
Good morning. Mr. Rogers, I, I want to say that before he gets started on his presentation, that it has, I think they were expecting a vote from us today, which obviously, we're not going to be doing that as per our agenda. We are going to be, I'm going to be looking for comments from the commissioners that will lead us into a consensus of sorts that will lead us back here next week if we so desire for a vote at that time. I, I think I've worded that. I'm looking for a nod from my administrator. Okay. Good morning, Tim.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to visit with you about a economic development initiative that has been previously considered by the Salina Airport Authority, Board of Directors, and the City of Salina, Board of City Commissioners. This is a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar incentive to provide the incentive and the, induce SkyWest Airlines to restore to, to Salina's scheduled service an overnight flight that would be nonstop tuned from Denver, Colorado. The overnight flight was in place prior to COVID, and so this is a attempt to restore level of service prior to COVID. Commissioners may recall two other proposals related to air service development that were related to ARPA dollars that the county has been administering. And the previous proposal, one was related to a flight to Houston, and then the other one was related to the possibility of an overnight maintenance operation, maintenance base by SkyWest Airlines and a subsidiary that they were considering, SkyWest Charter. Those two projects were, didn't go forward due to really circumstances outside of this community's control. A pilot shortage on the sense, on the issue related to the Houston flight, and then there was a, also, the issue with the SkyWest Charter operation, and that would have made, started up a maintenance base at the Salina Regional Airport that just lacked the governmental approval, U.S. Department of Transportation approval for the subsidiary SkyWest Charter. It gets in the category where you don't, you don't just stop trying. What's another opportunity we could, we would have to improve air service and in light of the impacts to service related to COVID, a pandemic, to a pilot shortage, and to get back to the level of service that really benefits Saline County and the residents of North Central Kansas? And that would be then restore the overnight flight to and from Salina nonstop to Denver. This morning, we'll go through some comments I submitted to you in a memo on this item. We will then, I'll turn over a presentation to Gary Foss, who is the, the Airport Authorities, and I like to say the community's air service consultant, that'll walk through the benefits of the overnight flight. And, but I do want to comment that we are, wanted to show that, yes, there's a benefit to the community and to the travelers of Salina and Slane County and North Central Kansas, but we wanted to demonstrate and show that there's an economic benefit to the county in the form, in the, in the form of increased in county sales tax. This really gets to the area of trying to model, and trying to find a model of what the value of a in-plane passenger is. And we found there is no model. There are state studies, and there's national studies that Gary Foss and his associates drew from to, to extrapolate what that benefit would be. And you will see in Gary's presentation, a estimated increase in Slane County's sales tax for the general fund, an increase in Slane County's sales tax for the jail, for the jail fund. This is not an exact science. It is, but it is based upon the fact that there is a value to air passenger, to a passenger. There is a value and a spend that is associated with that passenger, and that's in the form of additional tourism, hospitality spend, business and trade, there is job creation, regional development, international trade, all associated with a passenger. Passengers to come to and from Salina, Slane County, from all over the nation, all over the world. And of course, our residents travel throughout the nation, and they go, and they travel throughout the world on international travel. We do believe, and I think the numbers here are very exact based upon past performance of this overnight flight in this market, and what other markets have experienced with an increase based upon an overnight flight. We believe that there is, will be, an impact of over eight thousand, approximately eight thousand additional passengers. Those passengers have an economic impact on our community. We also want to visit with you about this morning and answer the question of after an incentive that's made up, a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar incentive, four-hundred-thousand dollars, the city, which has been approved, one-hundred-thousand from the Salina Airport Authority, which is in our, our budget, and we're ready to go with that, and the request is four-hundred-thousand dollars from the county with your ARPA, ARPA funding. This is not related, again, to any other previous proposal. This is separate, and this is, this is separate. We also wanted to answer the question that has come up, and we did receive an answer, and Gary Foss will go over this again, what happens after the one year? It's intended to be a one-year incentive that would be paid out in monthly installments, based upon overnight flights completed. So we'll have a metric that we can see that the flights have been completed. SkyWest does have a new three-year essential air service contract that is in place, so there is certainty that SkyWest will be serving this market for three years. The incentive is a one-time to help offset the startup cost to bring in an overnight flight. And in my memo, we do read detail, and Gary will again detail, those costs. SkyWest would not restore or restart the overnight flight, but for the incentive to offset these costs. You'll hear from Gary that other communities are competing for the same limited number of crew that's need, is needed to do operate an overnight flight, and for the, the jet that is out there that needs to be allocated for an overnight flight. When we look ahead at what happens after the first year, we do have recently support and a, a quote from Dan Belmont, who's the general manager for this, this EAS market, and his quote was, that you'll see again in Gary's summary, "So long as the Ron remain overnight, flight is profitable. There is no compelling commercial reason to change it." So what he's really saying, it's in place, it's going to be operating, as it operates, as they see the passenger increase, it'll just become a normal course of their flying, and they do not see a need after they establish it to go ahead and terminate that or change that. The overnight flight, what that looks like today, the Denver flight is a midday flight. It arrives mid-morning, leaves around eleven o'clock, it misses the connections in Denver that are more ideal, that are more ideal. The ideal departure for Denver would be not eleven o'clock in the morning, it's about six forty-five in the morning, to reach Denver at seven a.m. approximately, and catch all flights leaving Denver at that time. The large United Airlines bank of flights that leave at that time. So that is the, the change that drives passenger traffic, increases the, the use of this line of regional airport, and benefits our passengers inbound and outbound. The overnight flight does require additional SkyWest station employees, and requires new hotel stays by the crew that comes in and stays overnight. That generates revenue. There is overnight maintenance that will be involved with the one fifty-seat regional jet that is used for the overnight. That jet has to be ready to depart the very next day as part of a schedule that SkyWest and United are providing to others, and so there will be a priority to maintain that jet using the resources at One Vision Aviation. But the key and significant expenditure is two and a half additional crew sets to do an overnight flight. Those all come at a cost. The cost associated with that is in excess of two-point-nine million dollars, two, three million dollars, two-point-nine million dollars is the cost that SkyWest needs to incur to start up the overnight flight. The ask is to offset and help with the startup cost to the tune of nine-hundred-thousand dollars over one year. SkyWest Airlines already provides additional value in this market. The United, United States Department of Transportation EAS contract that SkyWest is, 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 will be awarded, provides for twelve round-trip flights in this market. SkyWest adds two additional flights to that schedule, and they have since they've been here since 2018. That addition, those additional two flights on their dime is valued at over five-hundred-thousand dollars. So they are already very much a part of helping this community in that manner, and their presence in the community since 2018, and their level of service has been just second to none. Their reliability is at the top of the charts. Every time I see a report from, a monthly report from Gary and his staff on their reliability, on-time performance, and their completion, they hit and exceed many times any industry standards that are out there, both in the Denver market and the, and the Chicago market. With that, I'll turn over to Gary. He will go through a slide deck with you that will help you understand some of the, the numbers and the impact of this, as an airline executive looks at this, at this pack, at this from an airline executive point of view. Gary?
Gary, can you hear us? Yeah, good morning, Bob and Phil and the other commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much for having me. Next slide, please. So Tim had mentioned that we really don't want to stop trying in spite of some of the pandemic-related challenges that have cropped up here, and I wanted to add, add a little color to that. The big picture is, this is really about the viability of the Salina Airport, full stop. You would probably agree that there's no airport that can be competitive without round-trip connections to the biggest cities of the West. And as a result of post-pandemic pilot shortage schedule issues, this midday flight, we no longer connect to Los Angeles, over Denver, or Seattle, or any of the major cities of the West. And so in particular, you know, competition, when you're, when we're located geographically where we are vis-à-vis Wichita and Kansas City, people just drive. And so, you know, we have lost a lot of traffic. I'll, I'll outline the specific detail of that, but, but it's no, no less than that. And, and of course, any airport is a huge, huge economic driver. So the, the schedule will reconnect to these largest markets of the West. Aside from solving for this particular problem that an early morning and a late evening departure to Denver will do, these overnight flights are immensely popular, and I'll, I'll show you that, immensely popular nationwide. Much of my forty-six-year career, I was an officer at American Airlines, a planning officer at American, and the CEO of another airline, an American Airlines subsidiary, and we used to literally put overnight flights out to the highest bidders in terms of cities, and we would add our revenue to that. And why is that? Why are they popular? Well, it provides more flight connections to the largest connecting bank. At every hub, Dallas, Denver, Atlanta, doesn't matter, your biggest connecting flights banks are in the morning, first thing in the morning, and in the evening, whenever they, everyone's wanting to travel. And so you have, from the business traveler's standpoint, you know, all you folks in the room, earlier meetings, fewer nights away from family for business travelers, you know, particularly where we have a midday flight, you leave at eleven o'clock, you don't arrive until the evening, and you do business the next day. You can do business that, that first day. There's a huge synergy, as you know, between Kansas and Salina in particular, and Denver. And so by having an early morning departure to Denver and a late evening return, you have, supports more traffic from day trippers that is currently driving down to Wichita and catching a flight up to Denver. So you don't have to, you know, worry about the overnight. And leisure travelers, of course, vacation travelers, yourselves included, like to get their vacation started. And so you're paying for that hotel the first day, you're paying for that hotel, hotel the last day, and you'd like to get in in time to Orlando, let's say, to, you know, if you leave at seven o'clock in the morning from Salina, you'll get to Disney World in time for the six p.m. parade. And you could actually start cash, reaping the benefits of paying for that first day, and of course, you don't have to check out of the hotel at two a.m. as you currently do. So this is a nine-hundred-thousand, a one-time request. So this is a 900,000, a one-time request. And I'm going to show you what other airports are prepared to pay, you know, for something like this. Because of our relationship with SkyWest, they are wanting to help us, primarily Tim's efforts over the years to support them. They're very appreciative of that and are actually putting money out on their dime for Sky, for Solana currently. Next slide, please. So with some lobbying, we did convince SkyWest to bid non-stop service to Denver and Chicago, reinstating that. That's in lieu of a contemplated 30-seat charter service that they weren't able to get approval for yet. That's still in the pipeline. Replaces the existing connection, connecting tag flights to Hays. This is only the third city that SkyWest has bid on. 12 cities, they decided to pass. And just some of these cities have gone dark, so they've decided not to bid. And they either lost their jet service, these 12 cities previously served by SkyWest, or they're back served by eight-seat props again, of course, as we've experienced in the past. So this would be an initiative, probably would launch around March 31st if you vote to support the overnight flight. I mentioned to you that SkyWest is investing their own money in Solana. As Tim mentioned, the essential air service program only reimburses 12 round trips. They want to flush out a full schedule. United is also interested in corporate traffic, and SkyWest knows that Solana is an attractive market. So they are at their, at their current essential air service bid rate, investing a little over $500,000 of their own money to operate above and beyond what they're going to be subsidized for. So again, as I mentioned, this last statement right here, it's largely the collaborative effort that we have had with SkyWest that provides this opportunity. Next slide. And so, I wanted to give you an example of how popular these overnight flights are, or the early morning departure. You see here two examples of cities. One is Casper, Wyoming, on the left-hand side of the chart, that they moved a midday flight, exactly like ours, to an early morning departure, late evening return in September. And you can see that immediately, we're not even in a steady state yet, immediately there was a 31% jump in bookings. Likewise, Elko, Nevada, same story exactly. They had a midday flight that was moved into an overnight slot in September, so just two months ago, and saw a 44% increase in booking. So for all of the reasons that I outlined as to why it's attractive, it's attractive to every community out there. Next slide, please. So coincidentally, we have another client, a non-essential air service client, happens to be Lewiston, Idaho. This is public information under Idaho sunshine laws, that is negotiating to do exactly the same thing that SkyWest has given us the opportunity to do. The negotiation is not with SkyWest, it's with Big United, who operates 50-seat CRJ in the middle of the day from Lewiston, Idaho to Denver. The community is interested in moving that to an early morning departure because of the, in the interest of the business community there. And what you see here is an email from United Airlines to me. You can see that there at the top. And I'll just read this at the bottom. "reviewed with leadership, given the cost environment, the opportunity cost across our network and the current outlook on regional capabilities, we need to get to $4 million to move the route to an overnight flight on a CRJ." So this is not an exception. This is not a one-off. This is much more the way that the industry operates. And again, well, all that SkyWest is looking for from us is some assistance on offsetting their costs. When United Airlines is talking about the opportunity cost, they can put this overnight flight in any of, you know, 40 or 50 different cities and generate, you know, substantial revenues with it. That's why they're referring to that. Given the opportunity cost, they, you know, they'll need $4 million. So just, just a little bit of context for you. Next slide. So we have some good news here. And the good news on the left-hand side of the screen right here is that Solana has a strong base of business traffic, which you folks know, deemed by United to have one of the stronger bases amongst the essential air service markets. And what you see here is a quote from their managing director of sales, who at the time of the, as SkyWest was going through the height of the pilot shortage, they needed to procedurally, didn't have an interest in canceling, but needed to procedurally file termination notices for all of their essential air service markets if they wanted to pair any of them as we were going through the pandemic. And you can see that there were 29 cities that were impacted by that. They quickly, Solana was one of only two cities where they pulled that termination notice. The other 27 cities, they, it stood. And you can see the quote right here, that Solana, by far the most supportive, talking about Tim's efforts here largely, and have the best base of corporate travelers. Now, on the not-so-good news side, the, what you see is a chart showing what happened to our business traffic when we lost the overnight flight and, you know, had these unfortunate pandemic-related schedule moves, that of a percentage of the whole of our travel, it was 54% business. So we're able to track business travelers versus leisure travelers through their advanced purchase of tickets. Leisure travelers, vacation travelers typically buy their trips earlier, longer, farther out. And so there's a 21-day advanced purchase. And whether it falls within or outside of that 21 days largely determines whether it's a business or leisure. And so you can see that as a percentage of our total traffic out of Solana, 54% of all of it was business travel. After losing this overnight flight, it felt to 35% was business travel. Well, what happened to the difference? The difference, go to the next slide, please. The difference didn't quit flying, they just quit flying out of Solana. They started driving to Wichita more, and we lost roughly 7,000 passengers. You see a before and after here, 6,555 passengers. And much of that is because, again, you can't get there from here. You can't connect to Los Angeles, or to Seattle, or to these major city pairs. Next slide. And so currently, we're not competing for traffic in all of these cities right here, to all of these cities from Solana because of the schedule. And again, to be clear, this overnight flight, this early morning, late evening return from Denver, will reconnect to all of these places. So we're not connecting to roughly 130 passengers each way. So that's 260 passengers. For context, we only have 200 seats on a round-trip basis into and out of Solana. So we're not competing for a sizable enough market that it would fill our planes, all of our planes. And again, just to reinforce, you can see the types of cities right here. We're not talking Erie, Pennsylvania, or Kalamazoo. It's Las Vegas, Los Angeles, FedEx, Seattle, San Francisco, San Jose, Tucson. So the major cities in the West that you can't, can't connect on a round-trip basis. You can get there one way over Denver, and then you have to fly to Chicago, have a long overnight on a red-eye flight, on a late evening departure, and then sit at the Chicago airport for six hours. Well, people don't do that. They just drive to Wichita. Next slide, please. So the detail is that this particular flight would reinstate connections to 32 more cities on a round-trip basis. And essentially, that's what we lost. You see the cities over on the right-hand side, you know, here highlighted, highlighted in green. Next slide. So we lost 7,000. The new schedule will recapture 8,000, is what the projection is, based upon our previous history. Why? More than what loss, what is lost? One, the market has grown there over the years. And two, we didn't just lose the overnight, but there was this tag that was also imposed on us, you know, with the pilot shortage. And so 8,000, as Tim mentioned, that's each way. So we're talking about 16,000 passengers would be recaptured. 8,000 in and 8,000 out. And we're not taking any credit for any change in the leisure travel. If you can see here on the chart, this is strictly on the business side. Of course, leisure travel would be also using this at a higher propensity. And so this, in my view, would be quite conservative. Next slide, please. So we took this 8,000 passengers in and 8,000 passengers out, 16,000. And we tried to use established protocols that are out there. As Tim had mentioned, there's no one model. But there is general agreements that there are direct, indirect, and induced economic benefits. There were two studies here that we base this on. One is the state of Idaho, which was a little more conservative than Kansas. Both are similar, demographically similar in income levels, similar in just kind of the economic backgrounds of the state, agricultural-based. And so we thought that this was good to try to establish kind of some bookends in terms of what the economic value would actually be. Now, a direct benefit is a actual visitor spend. So what does a visitor, in both of these studies right here, there was a visitor spend that was outlined. And so that would be direct. Indirect would be somebody flies in on this new flight that we have for the reinstated flight, and someone else drives in to meet that individual and stays at a hotel in Solana or in Saline County. And induced would be construction and other restaurants being built and other things that are driven on an indirect basis by the increased economic activity. And so the framework here is that if we use the protocol outlined by the state of Idaho in their aviation study, it was roughly $10 million. If we use the protocol outlined in the state of Kansas, economic impact of aviation study, it was closer to 26 million. Next slide. And so this visitor spend is generated, of course, in different sectors, across different sectors, lodging, retail, travel, food and beverage, recreation. So taking the Kansas figures, we were actually supplied by Renee Duxler with the visitor spend in 2021 for the, by the Solana Area Chamber of Commerce for Saline County. And we applied those figures. So this takes the, specifically the $26 million in the Kansas study and allocates it based upon Renee's figures, based upon the Chamber figures. And if we take those, next slide. We estimate that Saline County taxes, your tax receipts would increase by about 500, roughly $540,000 annually. Now, again, this is an annual figure. We would expect this overnight flight to be there for three years. And so it would conceptually generate 1.5 million for you over that three-year time period. And so this is just the increase. This is not, this is not total taxes. This is just the increase generated by those incremental 16,000 passengers, 8,000 in and 8,000 out, broken out by your local retail sales tax revenue in blue and in orange, the jail sales tax fund revenue. And you can see some of the, some of the methodology over on the right-hand side. Next, next slide. So what happens after year one? That would be a question I'd be asking. And as Tim outlined, here's the quote from the Director of Business Development. He heads up the schedule there at SkyWest Airlines. So he's in a good position to talk about this stuff. And so as you can see, he, it was only removed for operational reasons as the, you know, as the world wrestled with the pandemic, you know, aviation was heavily, heavily impacted, and they were drowning aircraft and laying off pilots and everything else here. So they had no choice. They felt but to remove the overnight. But they're, they don't see any compelling reason, particularly if we were to help them with their costs. They're, they're going to do everything in their power, just knowing these are very people with a lot of integrity that have been there a long time. And, you know, again, are appreciative of Solana's efforts overall. Next slide. Aside from just the viability of the airport and shoring that up, ensuring that, without sounding flippant, if we ever want to be an overnight maintenance base, we have to have an overnight flight, of course. And so this is that opportunity. And why is that important operationally to an airline? So that they can move their planes and crews from one United system, United Airlines system, in Denver. So they probably have about 40 planes, 30 to 40 planes, flying for United at the Denver hub. And they also have planes, probably 30 of them, flying at their Chicago hub, while Solana is ideally located geographically. And so this is why you were chosen to be the maintenance base if they ever got this new airline off the ground, and that's still the plan. If they ever do get that, that new airline approved, the SkyWest Charter LLC, the 30-seat airline. So we do have one vision that's already doing work for SkyWest Maintenance. And in my 46 years, I've never seen a plane parked at a maintenance base and not use it. You need, you need that flexibility in the airline business. Every one of these planes, under federal air regulations, has to be seen in overnight maintenance once every three days. So every plane you get on has been seen at an overnight maintenance base, and had about eight hours of work done on it every third, every third day. And so there's, if you have a big fleet of planes, they have over 500 planes, they need a lot of maintenance spaces and a lot of maintenance capability. The Houston flight was not a commercial opportunity for SkyWest. We were pitching it to them based on the operational benefit. So while we know that there is a lot of traffic from Solana to Florida in particular that would flow more efficiently over Houston than over Chicago or over Denver, it would be, this would be on top of the essential air service program and would be unsubsidized, of course. And so it would be primarily the operational benefit. Now, I mentioned this in that without overnight maintenance, there is no hope of getting a Houston flight. That if you were to look at SkyWest's next, call it next 50 best route opportunities, they would be to bigger cities across the country. And so we're pitching this, and we're pitching the Houston service and had agreement to start the Houston service, actually, by SkyWest prior to the pandemic based on the operational flexibility that it provides. So, next slide, please. So it'll cost about $3 million to establish a flight, an overnight flight. Now, why, why is that? Because they have to activate a new plane. They have overnight flights that are operating throughout their system, many of them tied into existing maintenance infrastructure, as I've mentioned to you. But they're all profitable. These are the most, most attractive flights of the day, of course, connecting to the most number of cities. So they're not going to cancel profitable service in another city to move it over to Solana. What that means is that they have to bring on a new plane. A new plane, ever, rule of thumb in the airline business is a new plane takes 10 pilots. Each pilot can only fly 75 hours per month on a, under federal air regulations. So as Tim mentioned, this would take about a half a a half a plane or two and a half, five pilots, call it, two and a half crew sets. So that's five pilots. That would be two and a half flight attendants and two and a half mechanics incrementally is what they would have to bring on in order to activate this plane. And so that's roughly, whenever you do the math on that, that's roughly about $3 million. And that's on top of this $500,000 investment. So they're not looking to be made whole. They're just looking for some help, recognizing also that other communities are waving dollars in their face. 79 airports actually lost service during the pandemic, and most of those on the regional side. So we've been fortunate not to be in that group. But there's a lot of very hungry communities, hungry for air service, a number of them much larger than Salina, places like Dubuque, Iowa, you know, for example. And so they're all seeking air service. There's only three of these big network carriers, United American and Delta, and landing one of those, you know, is very challenging in the current environment. Next slide, please. So just in closing, just to summarize what we just talked about, this flight would restore connections to 32 cities, helping to keep the airport viable going forward. My concern is that without it, the airport will just wither on the vine. The markets, these 32 more cities, is 18% of all of the traffic that resides in the region where the Salina Airport is the airport of convenience or the closest airport from a drive time perspective. The additional inflamments will drive additional visitor spend in your restaurants, hotels, and elsewhere. And again, we're estimating a little over a half million dollars in additional county tax as a result of that. The flip side of the coin is there's no possibility to become a maintenance base or for a Houston flight without this going forward. And we think we have a real good shot at that. It's just sequencing this activity. And of course, both the maintenance base and the Houston flight would be generational, creating jobs for people, kids that are currently in elementary school there, you know. If we could get this flight up and running, I'm sure it'll do just fine. And once one of these major brands goes into a location with a new route, you know, they want to stay there 99 years. I don't, United, American, or Delta, none of them, you know, want to really cancel service. It's a very messy, messy thing. So that's kind of some thoughts on the opportunity and some of the risks involved. I'll turn it back to Tim.
Gary, thank you.
You bet.
Last comment before, standing for questions, myself and Gary can do that. Economic impact, you know, analysis that we generated and, you know, I think trust, I trust that you can take a look at the projected increase in county sales tax and feel free to discount that in your mind to what you feel that is because that's, that's an extrapolation. We don't have a model that we can accurately, in a more accurate, accurately, accurately kind of give you the best number. It's not, probably not any more than that, but it's, you know, 80% of that, something along those lines. There is a benefit to the county in increased sales tax because passengers do spend money. Do you believe that this is a significant economic development consideration by the county commissioners? I really do believe in a quote that we've used previously, there are few greater contributors to economic development than, economic development than quality air service. It is a key to keeping individuals traveling to and from our community, those that want to live here, but they want to also have access to friends and family and communities, major communities. It's also key to business and business investment and that continued growth. McGlynn, answer any questions that the commissioners may have.
Well, I'm going to go back to what, one of my comments at the very start, and that is that we're not voting on this today, but we do need to provide our county administrator some direction here as to whether we want to go forward with this to a vote, which would come back to us in the form of an RFA for next week. With that having been said, I'm going to ask each commissioner for comments or questions that they might have. And from there, we will conclude that we have enough support to go forward or that we don't. So I'll start with my Commissioner Sparks. Do you have questions or comments?
We really don't have any questions. I talked to Tim a little bit before this and got my questions answered. But I feel that this is kind of a no-brainer to go back to the overnight straight flights to Denver because a lot of people I talk to, that's why they travel out, they drive somewhere else to go because of the layovers and stuff. The one question I do have is that is, since both of these flights that leave here go to such areas as Denver and Chicago, that how often do those airports get closed down because of the weather? I mean, is it a, I'm just, that just popped into my mind.
No, it's a very good question. And we purposely, with the intent of mitigating weather issues, worked with SkyWest in 2018 to do the dual hub service, Denver and Chicago. And there are many instances where Denver is shut down due to thunderstorms or snow, but Chicago is open. And passengers have been able to be reaccommodated to or over Chicago and vice versa. And that has been an advantage. Also, it's an advantage if there is a flight delay or a cancellation, then passengers can be rebooked, reaccommodated on another flight based upon capacity on the jet, if their seats are available.
Okay, thank you. Because I just look at the monies we had allocated towards the other programs that you brought forth to us in the past. And this here money is available for this. I just can't see nothing but a benefit to the Saline County and to the City of Salina. Yes.
Mr. Hay.
Okay, I got a couple, I mean, a few questions. Number one, I've really never, ever been a fan of incentives to start with, but I know that there's, that's just a way of doing business anymore is, you know, buying stuff to get what you want. I don't know whatever happened to the time when people came in and said, you know, we want to come to your community. We'll give you something to come to this community. The other, is there still a pilot shortage?
Yes, there is. That pilot shortage is becoming less impactful. It's easing. That is why at this time that Gary and I can visit with SkyWest about this opportunity. This is why it's also limited, kind of, this is the time, kind of a one-time opportunity because they do have a limited number of pilots and crew that are available to start to reinstate the overnight flight. And they have actually the jets, too. If the pilots, if they did not have pilots available, we would not be able to talk to them about this. They also have the pilots available and availability now to be able to break the tag with Hayes to get back to nonstop, Denver and Chicago. So the pilot, there still is a shortage and probably always will be, there are never enough pilots, it seems like. Every student at K-State Salina, I was at their commencement last Friday night and watched, you know, about 20 students graduate in December and as professional pilots. And the good news, they all have jobs waiting for them. But the pilot shortage has eased a bit. So this makes this opportunity viable.
Okay. So pre-pandemic, you know, we had, we had the overnight flight.
Right.
And it was profitable.
It was.
Okay. How come we can't stand on our own merit showing that it was profitable before and having them come in? I mean, what is the guarantee that, you know, this $900,000 that we are going to, you know, keep this program? Like I said, pre-pandemic, we were making money. It was profitable. And to me, standing on our own merits of having them come back and says, hey, you know, we weren't losing money before, don't see any reason. Almost every one of the slides that he showed up there was a benefit for SkyWest. And it shows you that we should be able to stand on our own merit without having to give an incentive for them to come in. I mean, I think the only thing that was Gary's words that I heard was, you know, as long as it is profitable. And, you know, you said you have a new three-year contract, you know, getting ready. Why can't this, why can't this be in with that three-year contract to know that we've got a guarantee for three years that this is going to be a, this overnight flight will be with Salina for three years?
So if I don't, if I don't hit all the marks here, remind me. So I'll go back and start. Our first question about pilot shortage was very odd, very appropriate. In 2019, pre-pandemic, there was an over, there was an oversupply of jets and pilots. There was an ample number of pilots. The pilot shortage really started and became more acute because of pandemic, because pilots being furloughed and leaving the workforce and not returning to fly. So came out of the pandemic, and that's why there was, the pilot shortage became even pronounced, and then hit with a series of mandatory retirements at age 65. So pre-pandemic in 2019, when the overnight flight was in place, there was, airlines were looking for places to place crew and aircraft. After the pandemic, pilot shortage, and today, now there's still, there's, there's not enough pilots. There's jets and aircraft, but there's still not enough pilots. So it is a supply and demand situation that, as Gary outlined, that other communities are asking for that limited supply of pilots and they're offering more money. It's really, it's a bidding situation. Who can provide enough of an inducement or incentive to get to induce or provide the incentive for the allocation of a crew and capital in the form of the, an asset, and crew, asset and crew and jet to a community? That is a significant difference. The, I forgot your last point that was...
About putting it into the three-year contract?
Thank you. DOT just does not put this into a subsidy situation with the essential air service program. So they are not, they'll, and they did, the subsidy covers 12 flights per week. SkyWest is already plus that up to 14 flights per week, two per day. And the regulation, the program does not provide for a type of incentive to provide for this type of change in service to an overnight flight. That is left up to the community to then go beyond the base incentive.
Okay. And I guess my last, my last comment would be, I still go back to the point where pre-pandemic, it was profitable. We were, they were making money. We were making money. I still don't know why that we can't stand on our own merits and they come back in, they're still, according to the slides, they're still going to be making money. And they should be able to do it without the incentive.
But today, there is a risk that that will not happen and this helps.
There's a risk in everything, but, I mean, you know, it's, you know, from his data, what he's showing, I just, I don't see it.
See that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Commissioner Shadback.
I don't deny that this would be great for the community. I'm one that doesn't use Salina very often because driving to Wichita is easier and the connections are good. And I get that this is ARPA funds and not local tax dollars, but still, these funds are competing with other lists that we have. Important road projects, important building projects. So I'm not totally convinced about this yet. I do have multiple questions, Chair, if I can.
Sure.
All right.
Let me have a listen.
Right. You're using Houston and the maintenance hub as a carrot for this flight, I mean, for this flight.
It's to, to, yes, and I think to get to Houston, to find a pathway to get to Houston, that this overnight flight and overnight maintenance has to be in place.
Right.
They have to see Salina as an operational bridge and opportunity then to bring Houston onboard, yes.
Correct. So I'd still use the word carrot. So you asked for a million dollars for that flight to Houston, and you asked significant amount of money for the maintenance hub.
1.64, 1.64 for Houston and previously $400,000 for this SkyWest charter.
So let's just say we get this overnight flight and they say that. Are you going to be back in front of this board asking for more money for both of those projects?
Answer is no. Those projects are done and off to the side. And if Houston happens, it will have to happen based upon, as we've indicated, and we'll rephrase, Salina is seen as an operational bridge and makes for exchange of crew and jets between Denver, Chicago, and then Houston. They see an advantage of Salina being an operational bridge.
Okay. Who decides what's profitable and what level? I mean, profitable by $10 or do they need a million dollars? I mean, is that, that's very arbitrary, what's profitable. And are they the only ones that decide what's profitable?
I think that'd be a fair statement, yes, because the airline shares, does not share information as far as specific markets. SkyWest is a publicly held company and they share the revenues and expenses of the company as a whole.
Right. To further go on the Commissioner Hayes comments about COVID and we had that before. I think a lot of people are using COVID as an excuse. You know, the airline's got $63 billion in bailouts. So they're not hurting for money. The article I read this morning is five of the seven airlines have more pilots today working than they did pre-pandemic. Whether that article is correct, I didn't get the fact checked very much, but I just think that the sky is falling is just a kind of a way of things since COVID. And that bothers me. In the past, remind me about this one because I'm not so sure. In the past, they weren't even going to give us essential air service. And we had to write letters and bargain with them. What did they get when they came back? Because I remember that they, there was only a couple people that were going to get essential air service and they were dropping all these others.
Eight, about 18 months ago, SkyWest did issue a notice of termination to...
Right, right. Notice of termination, thank you.
29 communities within, it's, went back, looked at, within 12 weeks, 10, 12 weeks, we, working with SkyWest and United, SkyWest rescinded the notice of termination.
Right.
At Salina. And so that was just pointing out to them, are you really sure you want to give up the market, this market?
And we didn't give them anything on that one. There was no subsidies or anything on that one.
Just making that they understood the value of this market.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding me that. Did the city put any restrictions on their $400,000? On, is there a timeframe? I mean, again, this money is up against a lot of great road projects and building projects that we have. Has to be, has to be spent by next December. What restrictions did they put on you having a real contract and, you know, making this viable? So if not, then we just need to move on on some of the other things.
Well, we, working with the city manager and county administrator, what we have talked about is a one-year agreement with SkyWest Airlines for the overnight flight. That agreement would be, we're assuming to have that in place depending on two actions. One, action by the local community on the incentive. Two, that, that the, we see the contract in place with SkyWest and the US DOT. That would be effective January 1st. We'd like to have the agreement with SkyWest in place by the end of January and have the funds expended in 12 months from that point in time.
And I guess that my question was, I just didn't want this contract going on and on and on and on, and then it'd be in November and then it fails and then we're stuck with, you know, trying to figure out things. So I'm comfortable with your answer on that.
Yeah, county administrator, I think, I think Bill, I think I hit those points right that we've talked about. It's timing, all right, so, okay.
At this point, I don't have any more questions. I'd like to hear from the rest of the commissioners.
You know, I appreciate that. I mean, you have great questions and insight and, you know, further looking into this. So Commissioner Weiss.
Well, it just seems like the ARPA cookie jar is enticing to, to many. And at first it was Houston, we stepped up. Then it was overnight maintenance, we stepped up. It just seems like SkyWest or Airport Authority is, is wanting to... It just seems like SkyWest or Airport Authority is, is wanting to get in the cookie jar. And I don't blame them, but it, it hasn't come to fulfillment yet. And I'm, I'm concerned about the timeframe, same as Commissioner Shadwick, that, that it might not. And we do have many, many good projects on our, on the plate that we could be working aggressively towards not waiting two, three, six months out to see if a contract is signed. I buy into the economic impact of it, but the one year kind of concerns me. What, what keeps SkyWest from going to another community and having them offer incentive money and moving it there? Because if it's profitable in Salina, it could be profitable in Topeka. It could be profitable in other markets. And they have that incentive money every year from that other market to, to offset the startup and, and all of that. I mean, in a year, is Tim Rogers going to be back and saying, you know, it's, it's working, it's working good, but they need another $400,000 to maintain it here in, in Slayton County?
Commissioner, the answer is no. This is a startup incentive to start up the service. And I have every confidence, once it is in place, it continues through the remainder of the existing three-year essential air service contract that will be effective January 1. And I have every confidence that SkyWest Airlines will be in receiving successive contracts to serve Salina, provide the service as United Express after the, this three-year contract is, is, is finished. The airline, for practical purposes, will agree to a one-year contract for the startup. And, and that's what we have received from them is that, that, and I think the indication from Mr. Belmont is that they intend to have it in place and have it operate, you know, from thereafter as a standard item in this community, standard level of service.
Well, thank you, Tim. I appreciate your response.
Thank you.
Well, and I appreciate the response from all the commissioners. It's been very helpful to have these types of discussions. Perhaps I have a question or don't have a question that one of you may have brought up and, and, you know, it really helps broaden my viewpoint. I, I've had the advantage on, on you guys in that I've heard this presentation three times now. I heard it at the, at the SKEDO meeting. I heard it from the city meeting. And I've, and I've heard something, and now today. And I've heard something different every single time. Not as a proposal, but the one or two points that I pick up on that, that was in there that helps me understand this. And, and I get it. Every one of your questions, I've had those in my mind too, from the very minute that we had it over at the annex, 10, almost two weeks ago. I, I think, as I look forward, I mean, this is kind of like personally, investing in the stock market. Yeah, there's a risk. There, there certainly is a risk. Do I want to take that risk? That's, that's what I need to decide. It, this, you know, you may have one of those deals where your stock makes a lot of money and you may lose it. But you have to roll those dice, I think, sometimes, I think. And I'm not saying I'm willing to roll the dice yet, but that's what I'm thinking about. And, and, and I'm kind of glad that we have this opportunity to have the presentation. And now we have seven days supposedly, if we go forward with, with asking you to bring forward an RFP. We have, we have seven days to make up our minds. Maybe even ask more questions from the Airport Authority or from Phil or, you know, how, how's this money going to be spent? How much ARPA money do we have left? Can we do something else with it that we think is a better project? There's, there's all sorts of questions here that we have to ask ourselves, I think. And I'm rattling a lot here, but I, I think, what I've heard out of my fellow commissioners today, Mr. Administrator, is that there is some support. There's also some questions yet. Is this going to pass? I don't know. But I, I think I would like to ask you to bring forward next week an RFP in support of this or denial. I mean, it's up to you to do that and then we'll vote on that one way or the other. But we do need to give the Airport Authority and, and everyone the opportunity to get this forward because, like you said, it starts next month if the contract goes through.
Yeah. The essential air service, the essential air service contract will begin on January 1. This is, you know, it'll be within the framework of that essential air service contract, that three-year stability. But I think the key item is being able to communicate back to SkyWest, is the incentive available or not? And so they can make a decision. Scheduling wise, they have to receive a decision from the community on what the community can do fairly soon. Because to schedule, to set the schedule, it doesn't happen January 1. Probably happens at the end of March, early March, April. That's where the airlines are scheduling, setting those flight schedules now, that far out. This involves United Airlines and gating the flight and getting it into the reservation system and getting it to display properly. So it takes time. So that's why I think next week would be, would be just fine to have a, have it considered again and see where the commission is at that point.
Well, here comes my question then, the $64 million question, $900,000 question. If we approve this, and that means the city already has, and I know the Airport Authority already has, if we approve this and we go forward with this incentive and hand it to SkyWest that we are proposing that, they still have to say yes or no. Is that correct?
We still have to come back with a written agreement that they, we have the terms to it, agreed to. That agreement would provide for how the incentive is paid for, how paid out based upon flights completed. It'd be about $75,000 per month based upon completion of flights. But that would be coming back for final review and final presentation to the, to the governing bodies.
And that, assuming that this all goes forward and, and if they say yes, that would take effect February 1? Did I hear you say that or?
We'd like to have the agreement negotiated by the end of January. I think that is a key. Have that, so it'll be effective somewhere, say, February, so that the flights can be, be in the schedule for end of March, early April.
Well, Phil, am, am I correct in assuming that you're getting a direction from us to bring this forward in the form of an RFP and for next week? Is that essentially what you're looking for? And then we will have made up our minds?
That's great. Well, Mr. Chair, just, just to clarify my position, yeah, I do not want this to end here. I mean-
No, 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 no.
I want it to go forward and I, I probably brought up more concerns than anybody, but, and if I err, I'm going to always err on the side of economic development. I mean, so, I'm not saying I'm going to vote next week, but-
I don't think anybody's really ready to say that just yet, but-
And, and Mr. Rogers did a great job alleviating some of my concerns, but it's still out there. And I'd like another week to think about it.
I'm with you.
But definitely on the agenda. Yeah. I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, that's fine. One thing, Mr. Chair, I would like to see if, when that RFA comes, is it, that there is a date. There's a date into that that says that this contract shall be signed by this time. That way, we know that, that ARPA money, you know, it just didn't drug out any further that we had the opportunity to, to go-
Right.
-go elsewhere.
Am I getting a nod of the head there that that's feasible or?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
County Administrator and City Manager, we've talked about this along with the EDO, Executive Director and Chamber President. We know this has to be in place, and the airline knows it has to be in place by, by January 31.
I'm being a little bit presumptive by, by suggesting to Phil. And I appreciate you guys coming up forward. So I will look for a nod of the head one way or the other. Not in support or disagreement of what we're going to vote for, but the fact that we are going to vote. We are going to-
I just got one more. The ARPA money, can it, can it be used for what we're talking about? You know, you said you got, it has to be spent before December. Can it be used as payments? I mean, we're using it as a incentive, but the payments is going to be so much a month for so many months. Can that ARPA money be used for that?
So, yes, is the short answer to that question. So, air service, travel and tourism specifically was one of the things that ARPA was designed to help recover from the pandemic. And it has, the, the money has to be allocated by December 31st of 2024. If it's allocated, it can be spent for that purpose for which it's allocated for another two years after that. So, if we have a contract in place in, say, March 1 of 2024, it's no problem to have the last two payments occur-
Okay.
-in 2025.
That makes sense. Thank you.
And I have one more question, Chair.
I have it.
Can you explain to me, and I've, I've missed the whole point here, of the one-year contract versus the three-year contract?
The three-year contract that is referred to is the contract between SkyWest Airlines and the United States Department of Transportation for, to provide essential air service at Salina with the, by means of a federal subsidy.
Thank you.
And Mr. Gary Foss, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you for your presentation. I've listened to it, like I said, three times. And it's very detailed and informative and I appreciate it very much. And it's interesting to hear the inside story, you know, that you can present. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That having been said, I think we'll work on something else here for a minute. We'll go to our concept discussion.
Discussion of ARPA funds reallocation, backup list projects with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning again, Phil.
Good morning again. So, we have had some ongoing conversations about how we are spending the remaining funding that the county received through what's called the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Relief Fund under the American Rescue Plan Act. The commission previously approved some ways to spend any money that got returned to us. You did that sort of in a vacuum of information at the time. And so, there's some conversation the last couple of weeks at these meetings around revisiting that list and making sure that that's really what you want to do with the money. So, this issue is particularly salient because we have been notified by the City of Salina and their developer of multifamily housing that they are not going to seek the $1 million that we had set aside for potential partnership on that. So, we have a million dollars to play with. And then depending upon the vote next week, when it comes back, maybe as much as 1.4 million if we do not approve an incentive for air service. So, we do need to have some direction for staff on, on what the commission would like to see done with those funds. I, I will say, however, we are doing a great job overall in comparison to many communities. We have, we received 10.5 million, $10,532,376 in ARPA funding. And we have already spent over 6.7 million of that to date. So, we have a, just about 3.8 million left. And that's honestly not bad, given where we are in terms of the timeframe. So, I throw that out there. But, that having been said, backup list ideas. So, there are two things that the commission has already said that you wanted to do. One is an intersection project at Holmes and Reardon. And you had originally approved that for 125,000, 127,000, and then came back and topped that up to 200,000 because of some drainage issues. And then Fire District, some capital grants to Fire Districts in the amount of 500,000. And I will say, have been working with our consultants from IParametrics on that one. And yesterday did receive a draft application form and all that. So that is moving forward with Fire Districts. Then there are six other projects that were on the existing list of things that the commission had thought about previously. Two additional road projects. One for realignment of the intersection at Stimel and Old 40, and then one for some drainage improvements along Simpson Road. There were some housing-type projects in view of the fact that we knew this 1 million may come back from a housing project. So, one of those is a remodel at Salina Grace's new facility. One is a potential grant program to Kansas Wesleyan and K-State Salina for development of additional on-campus housing that would free up apartment units in the community. And then one is a project to improve some existing housing for medical residents that come in to this Salina family and their residency program. And then the last program was a food policy council through Kansas Wesleyan's Community Resilience Hub. There have also been several other things that folks have suggested to me. So, there are three other projects that I would call extensions of things we've done to date. So, one is another tire cleanup project. You'll recall that we worked with Farm Bureau. They did two tire events. North Salina Community Development also did one tire event that we moved some money around and funded, gave them some funding through Rodham Bridge. They've done a second tire event. They would like some, some funds for that. It's, we're talking small dollar amount, probably 5,000-ish. Big Brothers Big Sisters has an existing grant. And actually, they have two existing grants with us through ARPA dollars. But one of them, their corporate mentoring beyond school walls program, they have said if there are any additional funds available, they think they could use additional funding for that. Again, we're probably talking in the 10, $15,000 range, so not huge. And then Kansas Wesleyan, of course, one of the workforce development projects that we have given to the local universities was a law enforcement class at Kansas Wesleyan. They were funded for two years and they have said they would like to do a third year of those classes if the county would be amenable. That's about a $90,000 expenditure. Then there have been folks who have approached me about other things. A couple of these have been previously mentioned by commissioners. So, North Salina, they are trying to locate a, a bus stop in the community. There's been some issues around the locations where buses have been stopping. And so, they don't have a sense, I don't believe, of where that would be, what that would look like. So, the dollar amount on that, if any, is, is unknown at this point. Clean water projects, I believe, at one of our past meetings, Commissioner Weiss had suggested that some of the clean water projects had gone a little over budget. Maybe they could use some additional funds. I've talked with IParametrics. They're aware of three of the projects that they think could use some additional funding. Their suggestion, though, in order to make that fair, is we would not just go back and give additional money to people who requested money two years ago. We would open up a new, what they would call a, a round of mini- We would open up a new, what they would call a round of mini-grants, and people, water districts could, could apply on a very expedited timeframe for small amounts of money, maybe 10 to 20,000 dollars each, that would have the effect of helping some of those projects, but would, but be a little bit more inclusive. Commissioner Shadwick had brought up the potential of looking at some things for Schilling Road east of Ohio. So, you know, depending on what we wanted to do there, that would be potentially a major project expenditure. There was also some talk about facilities study, of course, basically substituting ARPA money for county capital improvement money, conserving our CIP to do actual projects. As you know, we've agreed with the City of Salina to do a joint facilities study in 2024. And currently, that's slated to be funded out of our CIP. Couple of other things. So we have, the state, the feds and the state are beginning to roll out programs under the Inflation Reduction Act. We've previously talked about the bipartisan infrastructure. There are all these multiple federal programs that are like a couple trillion dollars each. And so one idea is maybe we could do some consult, contract for a consultant to help us grab some of that other money that's out there. Another thought that occurred to me is these things are all just the things, excuse me, the things that, that are on the list so far are just the things that somebody has approached us with. But we don't know what else might be out there in the community because we haven't gone and asked in a couple of years now. So perhaps it would be, you know, better if we did an open call of some kind for projects that would fit one of our existing ARPA categories. I talked with IParametrics about that idea. They had some timing concerns, but they said, you know, it could work depending on the way you structured it and making sure that it's a very tight timeframe. And then, excuse me, since I compiled that list, three other ideas have been suggested to me as well. One, you know, we, we are looking at the Fire Districts and their capital needs. The City of Salina, of course, we partner with them on EMS. They would like to add another ambulance to the EMS fleet over the next couple of years. The difficulty is how to add one more, get it into the rotation for replacement. So I thought, well, you know, if we're spending money on the Fire Districts, maybe we could spend money on an ambulance as well. That would be kind of a one-time shot, and then, and then that would be in the regular replacement cycle. The Expo Center has also suggested that if we have money up for grabs, they would still like a pole barn out there, and we're looking at places to spend funds. They threw that in the mix. And then in dealing with some of the utility issues that have, as, as we've moved facilities around between this building, the, the island, looking at the old jail and the new jail and all this, it has occurred to me, it would be nice to just have a, a buffer of some kind for facility transition costs, particularly utilities. Because I don't know that we put a lot more, well, I know that we didn't put a lot more utility funding in the budget for '24. And certainly, we're hoping more efficient spaces, that those costs are not astronomical, but it would be nice just to have a little bit more comfort. So that's a whole bunch of ideas. I'm sure the commissioners have other ideas as well that I haven't mentioned. But I'm just looking for some discussion among any of those ideas, love them, hate them, rise to the top, go to the bottom, and then anything else, so.
Well, I'm gonna go back to the very basic thing of it. How much money do we have left? Is it 1.4 million? Is that the number? Or roughly, I'm.
So again, we have 3.8 million dollars that we haven't written a check for yet, but much of that is committed to something.
Okay, 1.4 is what you're asking.
We have at least a million dollars that we know that's up for grabs. 1.4, depending on the decision on the airport, air service incentive. There will be, I will guarantee you, there will be some increment above that where people turn back small dribs and drabs, or some other project just, you know, fails kind of at the last moment. So I would say, think of it, if you include, if you include air service into that, think of it in the one and a half, 1.6 million dollar range. Could be a little lower than that, could be a little higher than that. But I think that's really kind of what we're talking, is the one and a half million.
So those two projects that have been approved, the Fire District Capital and Holmes and Reardon Road, those are not in that 1.5 million dollars. Those have been approved, and, and we don't. Am I correct there?
So 127,000 of the Holmes and Reardon project was, like, we, we already had funding for that. The other 72,000 of that and the full 500,000 of the Fire District projects are really out of that one and a half million. So I would say.
900 grand.
Yeah, now you're at, yeah.
That's, that's the number that I'm trying to get, that I, that I have to work with. And, and I can see, you know, several projects here that I like, I like them. But if you start, and, and I'm trying to include the county. You know, this is the stuff that is gonna hurt or help our budget. But if you take that Simpson Drainage Project for 400 grand, we're down, you know, we're down to not much.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
At the airport, at the SkyWest goes through, that would bring that down to 500,000, correct?
Correct. I'll, I'll make my, my point as easy as possible. No open call. No open call. We need to put this to bed. So we, we don't have that much money that we can just sit here and have the whole public come to us. And, and I, I will say that I was a little remiss. Was it two years ago that we okayed this? Or a year and a half, or a year? I can't even remember now. So anyway. I was one of those that did not even think about this potential list very well because I thought it would all be gone by then. So, but now when looking on it, it's, it's easy for me. It's, it's either county projects or nothing. I mean, we need to look at our own budget now and what, you know, and I'm not saying not, maybe SkyWest too. But after SkyWest, I'm just saying the rest of that needs to be county projects. And a lot of these people have already got money from other COVID funds, and it's time, it's time for us to look inside. I would put probably, me personally, I'd probably put the facility studies at the top. I think that that has the single greatest impact potential in 10 to 30 years for us. A lot of these are one, you know, one and done, and they move on. But the facilities impact could really help, if we do this right, could really help future commissions. And, you know, whatever it takes to do that. So again, no open call. It's, it's no time to take more things, and, and let's think about the county, so.
And, and I wanna, this is a slippery slope for me, and I agree with that. Facilities at the top, without question. But when I see these, these projects within the city, and I mean, like North Salina Tires and, and bus stops and those types of things, I know that the City of Salina is within the Salina community, but those are also headings that come underneath the, the budget for the City of Salina. Where, where do we feel like that we need to be involved in those comments?
Yeah, OCCK runs the bus route, and they've received COVID funds.
I think what they're talking about there, though, is the bus stop for Greyhound coming to town, I think.
You're right, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
But, you know.
I see, I see what you're saying.
I, based on the amount of money that we're gonna have here, the time you get done with this facilities thing, I don't think there's gonna be any money.
I think you're right.
And, and look, let's look at this courthouse. We have seven departments that were displaced in this court remodel project. We've gotta find some space for these people to operate. And, and all these studies, he's hit the nail on the head. And we've got a, we've got a health department that needs a new home in the worst way. I, I think you can stop right there, and you've got it done. That's my opinion.
Yeah, and the health department money, it can't be spent by next December. I get that because that's a long-term project. But, but the facilities plan that identifies the health project can really help, because we've always talked about, let's think past this commission. This is the time for us to think past.
I'm, I'm right on board with you, buddy. Right on board. So I'm, I'd like, maybe as you move forward, Phil, that you can identify what that facilities project might include with a, with a guesstimate of how much it is. Then we would have something left that we can go down the line a little bit. But I've been on board with that comment that we need to treat ourselves first here this time around. I mean, we, we opened up 11 million dollars to the community, and it's time now to come home and fix our own problems.
And being this close to the end of year, when are we going to, on this 3.8 that is not, is allocated but not spent, when are we gonna tell these people it's either time or get off the pot? I mean, you know, because we are gonna be in a crunch time down toward December if that stuff isn't done.
Yeah, great question. So we have attempted to put deadlines in each of the agreements that we've made with folks. So for example, for the Water Districts, most of their deadlines are the end of February. And so if they don't have funds spent, and I think I'm only aware of one Water District that doesn't have funds spent, but if they don't have anything spent by the end of February, we have the option to pull the funds at that time. Many of the other projects are in the summer. We have several deadlines in August, September. And then we have a few that are, are into November. But those are the ones that I think are likely to, to spend most of the funding. I think, I, I think we will, next December, I'll just, next December, we will have some number, 63,408, you know, whatever that number is, that we're gonna be scrambling around. But, but my hope is that that number is gonna be a very manageable number. I want that number to be 60,000, not 600,000, so.
And the bottom line is, are we talking about the end of 2025? Is that the, the latest date that it has to be spent by?
It has to be allocated by the end of '24 and spent by the end of '26.
26, there we go. See, that's the number that I've been kind of, I don't, we're not gonna have a problem spending the money. And, and my number one goal here, after we get past all this, not send any money back to Washington, DC. I mean, they've sent us this money, and we're gonna keep it, right here in Sling County.
You'd be surprised how many counties is already, that we talked to during the KAC. It says, well, we're gonna have money to give back. I'm thinking.
Well, I'll, I'll expand on that a little bit. At the KAC, I heard, there are counties that have not spent a dime yet. They just put it in the bank, and they haven't done anything to spend it. Well, we're not having that problem. So, okay, have we worked this over enough, Phil, or?
So I think what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, next Tuesday, I'm bringing back a report on potential uses that would include the air service incentive and a facility study, and then maybe one or two other things, and you all can decide yea, nay on that.
Can I ask, is there a price tag on IRA consulting? What, what, what you think that might cost? Because that could be money that's well spent.
I would anticipate 75 to 125, somewhere in that neighborhood just based on, you know, what we've spent so far on ARPA consulting.
And just, and it might be a legitimate project. It could be built into our budget, too. I mean.
Sure, absolutely.
I, I agree with you. It could really be cost-effective.
Everything that we could scrape off ARPA to not impact our budget is, and, and I'm, I don't, I don't like funding programs that are ongoing because they become dependent on you to, to help them. I like the one-and-done type things. And I can understand why Kansas Wesleyan Law Enforcement wants to continue having a class. I can understand why Big Brothers Big Sisters want to continue to have the funding to do their things. We just can't let ARPA tie us into some ongoing, long-lasting thing.
Good point.
I think we're clear on this, and we'll move forward. I'm gonna shut this concept discussion off, and we're gonna move to the next week's. We've already heard a couple of things that we're gonna be talking about for next week, along with the Health Department, the symmetry contract, and a Roden Bridge motor grader bid award. And unless someone has something for the good of the cause to bring up again, I will ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we adjourned today's meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Meeting over.